Can we all please stand for the pleasure of allegiance? To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Veronica Bates is excused. Stephen Berry.
Here.
Marion Poitras.
Here.
Suzanne Salisbury.
Here.
Beth Schultz.
Here.
Vice Chair Mike Popovich.
President.
Here Suzanne Joyce.
Here.
Student Grisia Borelli is excused.
And we'd like to name an addition to us for school board. We have Heidi Nguyen here and Wendy, would you like to come up? Ms. Harvey, excuse me.
My real name? So on behalf of Westbrook High School, I would like to introduce you to Heidi Nguyen. She will be a fabulous member to the school board here at the Westbrook School District. I've known Heidi for three years and in that time I have seen her become more and more of a leader throughout our school and community. Not only does she take part in events here at Westbrook High School, but she does do a lot of volunteer work outside in the community, in particular with Ronald McDonald House and other area local agencies. She's been involved in student government, she participates in a variety of extracurricular activities and she excels in every way academically. She is just basically a well-rounded superstar. Since her freshman year, she's been involved in numerous student groups throughout the building, which makes her uniquely qualified to report out on our successors and successes and accomplishments, as well as the challenges that lie ahead for our student body. Heidi is thoughtful and pragmatic, she's well-spoken and extremely conscientious. She is also incredibly bright. Because of her natural ability and tireless involvement in activities, sports and clubs, no one has a better command of the issues facing Westbrook High School. Our students, it is for this reason and with complete confidence in her ability that we believe she will thrive in this role as a new member of the Westbrook School Department's school board.
Thank you. I have to say the process was very hard. The candidates all had incredible backgrounds and hopefully each one, they're all busy in so many organizations and activities, so I'm hoping that they will find something as well, but welcome aboard. Thank you. Next, we have adjustments to the agenda. We have one 12.10 to request to approve an overnight trip for college tours in northern Maine for the WRVC. Students from November 5th, 2019 to November 6th, 2019. We'll add that on to the agenda. And we also, I have given the adjustments for communications, those have been passed down. You should have those, does everyone? For the minutes, if there are no objections, we'll let the minutes stand. And the student council report, I don't know if you have anything yet, or is this probably too soon? Put you on the spot.
Grisia, she did help me create a list of what's going on in the school and the different times. So next Friday, the National Art Honor Society is gonna go to Freeport to participate in the yearly carving service work that they do with LL Bean to help carve pumpkins. The October is LGBTQ month, so last week students had their first club meeting, you know, the Spectrum Club. Seniors and parents are invited to the high school this Friday from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM to meet with Ms. Durges in the aspiration center to work on the FAFSA applications. Spirit Week and Homecoming begins next week. And a Spanish club is also being in the works. For the WRVC, they have an open house on Wednesday, October 2nd. Around 70 people came to visit the center and see where their child spends a good portion of their day. Our current enrollment in the WRVC is 435, which is up by 77 students compared to last year. And I think that is about it.
Good, thank you. Next is public participation. Would anybody like to speak? It's time. The superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce, and welcome Heidi. You're gonna be a terrific addition. You represent your peers magnificently, so congratulations and thank you Westbrook High School for raising such a wonderful student and to your family as well. Thank you for joining this important work. In your packets and in tomorrow's Thursday folders, you'll have the October Teaching Elementary newsletter. Just a few highlights I'd like to mention. This Friday, there is no school for students. It's a professional learning day for our entire staff. And next Monday is Indigenous Peoples' Day, so there's no school next Monday as well. So I hope all of our students have a good long weekend, make sure you do some reading, but have a good long weekend. I also want to echo what Heidi said about the Art Artist Society who is participating again this year in the Camp Sunshine Project at the LL Bean Campus in Freeport. They are carving pumpkins and have been carving pumpkins for several years that will be on display near the front entrance, near the front entrance of the LL Bean Maine store. So if you're in Freeport next week, I hope you'll be able to stop in, see our students who will be there on Friday morning, but also throughout the weekend in support of a really terrific cause in Camp Sunshine. At next month's Educational Programs Committee meeting, we will be reviewing all of our building and program and department success plans. Those are our school improvement plans, our program improvement plans, goals that we set for the entire school year. So we look forward to sharing those and to engaging everybody in all of those important goals and the actions to help lead our schools forward. I'd like to congratulate a number of our students who have been selected to participate in a special project at the Telling Room in Portland. It's the Telling Room's Young Writers and Leaders Program. It's a nine-month after-school program that offers creative writing through poetry and personal narrative, as well as documentary storytelling. It's a magnificent program. And the kids from Westbrook who will be participating are Lena Awad, Safana Jalal, Moose Mohammed, Nora Sager, Zainab Danerib, Sheila Lopez and Nor Abdul Jalil, excuse me. So congratulations to all of them and thank you, and we look forward to your performances of your writing, as well as the books that are published as part of that. So please read the entire newsletter that is in your Thursday folders this week, and I hope that everyone is receiving those notifications from pre-K through 12th grade in our Thursday folders. All of the documents, the flyers, the notices, the newsletters, very important information is communicated through those, so please be looking for those on Thursday afternoons. I'm pleased to say that the Westbrook Schools received a grant from the United Way of Greater Portland, the Brick and Beam Foundation, which is a group of young professionals who are very supportive of learning, especially learning and literacy. They've granted us $1,000 to help to provide stipends for school staff who are part of the Adopt a School project at Canal School. So thank you to the Brick and Beam Society for that kind gift. We continue to complete the Sacagawea Building Project. It seems like it's all this close to being done, right Brian? It's very close to being done. And one of the big last pieces is our playground, which is coming along beautifully. If I may, Mrs. Joyce, if Mr. Flanagan could give us a quick update as to where we are with the playground construction?
Thank you.
All right. Yes, and matter of fact, this morning, we met on-site with the playground architect, Sasha Meisner, who made this great design that we have, and the installer, who is Seabreeze Property Services. And they have done a great deal of the groundwork out there, the site work, building things like stone walls and there's mounds of dirt and things like that, in preparation for a number of pieces of equipment that we estimate will start arriving within two weeks. Hope to have the swing set coming in soon. Something called a global motion, I had to ask what it was and see pictures of it. It's a nice structure that does rotate so that the kids can play on that. And there's also something called a net climber, will be a major piece there in the middle of the playground. And pretty neat the way that's structured, and you have tunnels and bridges as well. So a very, very different structure to the playground.
There's a complete description of the drawings, the plan, some of the equipment that are in the packets. It really is going to be a unique structure, a really beautiful structure, a structure that really is geared to children of that age, not just children who go to the school, but children in the neighborhood as well, because we really want that play space to be used by the community. If you remember, that was one of the major points, we wanted to support that section of town by having a play space there at Sacagawea School. So we look forward to that completion, which will be coming hopefully very soon. We have another brief presentation tonight. Mike Russell and Wendy Harvey from Westbrook High School have been involved in the BAR Grant Initiative for the last two years at the school. And this is a project that has really helped to transform the identity of our school, as well as the social and emotional learning of our school, really helping us to develop the whole student, the whole child at our high school level. So Ms. Harvey and Mr. Russell.
So good evening again. BAR stands for Building Assets and Reducing Risk, and the intent of the program is to provide a 35 to 36-week program, which is a curriculum delivered to the students in their regular education classes. And so they get this curriculum delivered to them in history class, in science class, in math class, and in English class. And the purpose of that is so that they begin to build relationships peer-to-peer, peer-to-teacher, and then it also builds the relationships teacher-to-teacher. And as we go through that process, the first year of the grant was really, we were part of a national study where they were gathering data from our school. In the first year of the grant, we saw huge successes with increasing attendance, decreasing disciplinary incidents, and decreasing our freshman failure rate. That continued into year two, and we are now in year three. So we are also working with the National BAR Association to determine, should we increase our partnership with BAR, to take that curriculum either to the 10th grade level or to take that curriculum to the 8th grade level, because there are curriculums for both. And so we're working with our national coach and partner, not only to continue to perfect our program here at the high school, but also to see if we can develop it further within the Westbrook School Department. So I believe we have a brief video here, provided by BAR, that will give you a great description of the program, how it works for students and staff, and what's its overarching purpose.
Is, okay, you're doing some pretty amazing things, we're seeing some really amazing results, and it usually comes out of some data point.
Higher attendance percentages, higher credits earned, fewer discipline referrals, a significant reduction in worst failures, and overall reported in teacher satisfaction. So several teachers in their first year are closer to the end of their careers than this is the reason why they got into teaching.
One of the ways it's helping us close the opportunity gap is in our graduation rates, and that has a lot to do with that connection and that feeling of support.
I've never been to a school district that didn't talk about like supporting the whole child, right? We're gonna support the whole child, but what does that look like? I believe BAR plays a tremendous role in helping students feel welcome, supported, which then allows them to persist.
You can see a complete change, and it affects the entire campus. It also has helped to change how teachers respond to student behavior.
Does it change the way that I look into the kids?
Absolutely. I see more chances to do something with my observations.
It's just not a program to, you know, bring numbers up, but it's built in a positive aspect to the school experience.
It transformed the way teachers see school, transforms the way kids see school. BAR really brings teachers together, kids together, and parents together, and that's better for all of us in the end.
For many years, we kept hearing about St. Louis Park and this amazing program that they have going on, they're graduating students at a much higher rate. Students are coming in, they're earning more credits, like what are they doing?
In St. Louis Park in 1998, I was the 9th grade counselor, and half the students failed. It was the 5th year in a row. I went to the principal.
She was not in good shape. I mean, I think she knew better in credit.
He provided a much broader frame. In fact, this was a national phenomenon, that about half the 9th graders were failing courses, and really challenged me to come up with a new model.
And under Angie's leadership, we started working with 9th grade teachers, trying to address programming needs that the teachers thought would help support kids who were struggling. I think when Angie started to kind of reveal to the rest of the school how extensive our failure rates were, we all, I think most people realized, okay, something's gotta change.
So that was the beginning of BAR. BAR is Building Assets and Reducing Risks. So the elevator pitch of BAR is if you focus on positive intentional relationships, and those relationships are staff to student, staff to staff, and student to student, at the same time really being attentive to data. And so data's not just what's attendance or grades or discipline, but it really is kind of who is the student. We know that students and adults will be more successful.
It really changed the climate in the school. Everybody felt it.
In 2010, we received our first research grant from the US Department of Education investing in innovation funds. What that enabled us to do is to really test the model. After the second round of studies, we have 66 schools, and every single school showed dramatic changes in the first year, and I knew it was for real.
We have the huge privilege being able to say that BAR has worked in every school that we've implemented it.
You know, there's eight strategies, there's eight components, and we can speak to each of those. And usually schools will say, well, I'm doing that, or we kind of hard to get that. The unique part of BAR is that it's using all eight of those together, and it's the connectedness of all eight.
If you don't know a kid, you can't teach a kid effectively. And if a kid doesn't trust you, which is what BAR does, is build relationships, then you can get kids to learn in a way that you never could before. So when a school signs on, there's support all the way through, because it isn't easy to transform education, and that's why we know the support needs to be there.
The coordinator is put into place usually pretty early on, and that coordinator is provided with a variety of support.
And there's also trainings throughout the year for the teachers to interact with other teachers across schools that are also implementing BAR.
It brings together people from around the country that you would have never met if it weren't for BAR, and now you have that connection with them.
I tell you, I mean, that freshman year, like, made me think a lot deeper into things and like stuff that I never expected to talk about in school, especially in freshman. The teachers working together, the same students, is a critical aspect of it, that block unit.
You're off of your island. Through BAR, I interact with the kids, science and math teachers, which I would have never known before.
What's the most critical portion of BAR? For a teacher, I say it's our block meeting. It's our opportunity to come together, compare notes on students.
We meet at least once a week to do block meetings, and then anything they can't do as a teacher, or that's outside their scope, I take that back to risk review.
The risk review team supports the student at school, but also looks for community resources to help support students and sometimes their families as well. Nobody slips through the cracks because we're looking at it in a very systemic way.
We want to keep our families engaged in the process, which allows the parents and the teachers to be able to provide feedback to the staff, to the BAR coordinator, in a way to be able to then scale the impact that we're providing.
It's been really exciting just to talk to other principals. It takes a lot of practices that occur in isolation on many campuses, and puts them all together under one umbrella, which would be BAR.
One of the key pieces about BAR is it's same students, same teachers, better results.
I have not a doubt in my mind that it will help almost every school to get better results than they currently do, and to have a better school climate, and just have more fun at school.
So BAR's goal is implementing all eight strategies. You can notably feel when you go there.
I think it comes down to like not a certain thing that they do, but like knowing that like you're a person as well, so just trying to get to know you better. BAR to me is a program that is like there for you. Like they're watching if you need help, like say if you're falling, they'll help to try to catch you. Well, I understand that maybe it's to help like meet the people and like get to know people around them more.
With the teachers, I know it's easier to bring up things with them. Not only like has it helped me to be organized and things like that, but it has also like given me like an extra push. Or with people socially friends, it's easier to make friends, which is always great.
It's for every school, you know? So if you're doing well academically, BAR still supports the work that you're doing around building school culture, building school climate, supporting student success overall, even, you know, even outside of the classroom as well. It's really about building a strong school community.
So currently, Mike is serving as our Director of the BAR Programming. Prior to that, it was Rochelle, Missouri. And we meet actually three times a week. The teachers just meet in small blocks, and then our big block meetings, we have guidance counselors and social workers join. And then we have risk review at the end of the week with our entire social work, guidance department administrators, and Mike. And then we take and implement interventions. The small block is mostly classroom intervention-based. Big block goes into sort of those tier-two interventions. And then finally, the risk review is where we apply interventions both at school and outside of school, and we partner with outside groups in order to make that happen. And I think Mike would agree with me that as we have done this, we are now a school in year three of this, so our freshmen are experiencing it for the first time, our sophomores have been through it, and our juniors have been through it. And what I would say is that it helps the entire school community to be a kinder, gentler place, more focused on learning. And I think we've definitely begun to see the results of that and look forward to it continuing.
Yeah, and I would just, I would just add that, I mean, we are in year three, and it's really easy to come in here and show this video and like, because they're selling this to us. If it wasn't for the statistics and the data that we're seeing, we're seeing, you know, a drop in suspension rates, disciplinary actions, a big drop. We're seeing a drop in failure rates and an increase in attendance. Those are the three big things. And if it wasn't for those things showing to us, this video probably wouldn't mean that much, because we've seen all these videos before. So for that, I'm a believer, and I feel like that we're on the right step, or on the right path. I also printed out a little brochure for you guys, if you have any other additional questions, I gave you some contacts, if you want to give me a call or ask any questions, feel free to do so.
And we will be back at a future meeting to provide you with some of those statistics and that data, so that you can see how we've grown over the past three years. Any questions? Yes?
Yeah, it might be helpful to hear from some students when you come back.
Yeah, it might be helpful to hear from some students when you come back.
Mm-hmm.
And also, how will you determine whether or not it will go to the 10th grade or 8th grade?
Yep. So one of the factors that will determine which way we take the curriculum is that you need to have at least 80% of your students working within a team in order to create the BAR model. So we have, at the freshman level, a pretty easy way to make sure that 80% of our students do that, but as they get to the sophomore level, even though we still have sophomore teams, not all kids are totally on one team. So one of the things that we're looking at, and we're gonna be partnering hopefully with the middle school without, is looking to see if we can take it actually to the 8th grade level, because we think that that would be a better fit and more faithful to the BAR model if we did that instead of bringing it to the 10th grade.
Thank you.
And that's something that's being discussed now at the middle school success meetings. I mean, we want some of that idea going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is really exciting. I love it when we have these presentations at school for us, and just being able to see this, and really enthusiastic about this.
And even though the kids on the video were not our kids, if we had our own media production organization here in the schools, or if we had a video department, our kids would be saying similar things as would our faculty. It really has truly been transformative here at Westbrook High School, and I'm very proud of the work that the staff has done. It's been a lot of work for the staff, not just for Mr. Russell and Ms. Harvey and the other administrators, but for all of the teachers, especially the teachers who work with the teams. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of care about the kids. It's been a terrific communal effort, really focused on the support of everyone here in this school. Really proud of it.
Actually, I do have a question. You wanna go up?
Can you bring it to the 8th and 10th grade, or did you have?
We don't have to choose, but like I said, in order for the model to have fidelity, you need to have 80% of students on team, and we're more able to ensure that at the 8th grade level and the 9th grade level. I think we're going to be trying some other initiatives at the 10th grade level. Challenge Day is something that we're bringing to the high school this year, and we've already invited at least one school board member to participate, and we'd love to have any of you who would be available on December 2nd or 3rd to participate in Challenge Day. But you can't have your cell phones for the entire day, and you can't leave the room. So you're gonna be there for about 7:30 to 3:00, and you're gonna be with about 100 kids and 30 adults doing Challenge Day, and that is specifically geared towards school culture, and it picks up on a lot of the themes of BAR. So I think it'll be a nice addition, so that if students got the BAR curriculum at the 8th grade level, at the 9th grade level, and then we do Challenge Day at the 10th grade level, I think we'd see a really pretty amazing turnaround in school culture.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone?
Oh, sorry.
I don't remember who, sorry, I didn't see, but I actually went through the BAR program, I believe it was my first year, and I've seen the difference between when we were on teams and when we weren't. And when we were on teams, teachers were checking in on us more, they were asking about our schoolwork, and I think it made us turn in assignments easier, because if a teacher's checking in on you, you're like, oh, my gosh, I need to go do that. So it's like a little reminder, and I think that also helped, because I do know some of my friends were like, oh, thank God, the teacher reminded us. And as I've moved up, teachers don't really assign or like ask you about your assignments as much, they just expect you to know. So I think that having the teams and having a teacher check up on you was a lot easier and something that really helped.
So what she's talking about is, in the freshman level, instead of four teachers, five teachers, all contacting that one parent separately, there's one teacher that has 25 kids on their roster or their list, and there, and in our meetings, we talk about this child, we find out where, and it's just that one contact person. So instead of a teacher making 100 phone calls, they only have 25 phone calls, which then allows them to have additional time to kind of follow up and track those students. And it's not just the kids that are missing work, it's the kids that are doing just fine. We talk about everybody at these meetings, and maybe we're finding ways to challenge that student that's doing really well, but we think they might do a little better. So it's for everybody.
And also, at the freshman level, we're able to team up the students who are on that teacher's team. We also put them in that teacher's ACE, so that they're also getting them during advisory time. So there's a lot of logistical pieces that, as a puzzle, work really well freshman year that would not work equally as well in the sophomore level, but I think would work very well at the 8th grade level.
And there are some pieces that the sophomore class is using from the BAR model, kind of like the meetings and the processes that goes along. So they are adaptive.
Yeah, we use the same kind of data collection at the sophomore level, so, and we're able to do that now. In the first few years of the grant, we couldn't duplicate any of the process, because they were collecting data from us. But now that we're in the third year, we can take some of the practices that we use at the freshman level and use it at the 10th, 11th, or 12th grade level.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, thank you. And last thing, we just, I want to recognize two of our, two of our employees who will be leaving us in the next week or so. First, Jen Druin, who's been our district nurse and nurse at Westbrook High School for seven years, is moving on to other adventures in the medical world. So thank you for all the work you've done to promote health and wellness, and to provide outstanding clinical care here in the district. We appreciate the work you've done. And I'd also like to recognize Sandy Mailman, who's one of our school resource officers. Sandy is not here tonight, because she's being honored at another celebration, but Sandy is retiring from service at the end of this week, and Sandy has been in our schools for, I believe, six years. Not year, how many years, Lori?
Three.
Three years. I doubled that, seems like six, right?
Yes.
Sandy's been an important member of our school family, so congratulations, Sandy, for the work you've done here at Westbrook Middle School and our elementary schools, but thank you for your service as a police officer in this community and other communities. So congratulations, and we'll miss both of you very much. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Onto chair and committee reports. Beth, do you have anything?
No. No, but I missed a little thing that I wanted to say about back onto Peter's, or back onto communications. I know that's not really a good place to say this, but I had a question about the communications that are in the packet. On the second page, Nancy Adams listed twice, and it looks to be the same item that I had asked, so I just wanted to see if that was two different positions, or if it's the same position. It's Modern and Classic Languages Department Leader, and then Modern and Classic Languages PLC Leader. Same.
It should be the same. I'm gonna look into that for you, so it should be the same.
All right. All right. Sorry. Kind of weird.
No, thank you.
No, the only thing I wanted to mention was about One Westbrook Met, and I unfortunately wasn't able to go, but I think it would be good to have maybe a listing on the website of when the meetings are.
Right.
They have a couple, there's three subcategories of One Westbrook. There's an implicit bias committee that meets the first Wednesday of every month at the Public Safety Building. There's also a secondary school success meeting, the first Thursday of every month, and then the Parent Voice Committee. These are really great meetings that are well-attended. Regina Phillips has done really good with this program. It's really, it's great to talk to some of the parents and hear their concerns, and Lori's done a really great job of getting people there and the parents. It's really fun to be a part of that, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes. There was a slight change in the GCGA to allow the superintendent and the finance committee to recommend pay scales for subs, and that would be forwarded to the school committee, and then we removed our policies from that, and then Peter will bring the policy to, the proposal to the finance committee. And Regina looked at, reviewed the ELL department, followed to revise the plan, which include her review by Peter and Jody and the Department of Education. And let's see what else. Yeah, that's, I think that's it, yeah. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Norrie?
I wanna do education programs. We, Peter presented to us the ESA goals, and I asked him to share that data with us tonight. Do you have that?
I do not, I apologize. I'll get that. I thought that was for the next ed programs, I apologize, Norrie. I'll get that this month.
That's right, next meeting. That's all right. Also, they, we presented our new schedule for the upcoming year, and every meeting, what's gonna be reviewed, and we're gonna do a recycle that every year, go through that process. We talked about, shared the work with focusing on equity and opportunity, and how the leadership team is reading a book on poverty and engage in a leadership institute to foster opportunity. We also asked, we requested to have more learning about equity in, with the school committee, so we would like to get more involved with that, with the staff members. And then Jeff Garrett presented to us on the NEASC at the high school and WRVC, and then how there's gonna be a accreditation team visit in March, and the priorities are gonna be incorporated like the main, main's guiding principles, consistently written curriculum documents, physical, like, physical building plans, the, do we need updates where? That's all gonna be part of that. Parents' student engagement, systematic approach to professional development. So that's what they're all gonna be looking at when they come to evaluate us. And that's it. Next meeting is October 16th.
Thank you, Norrie. Yep. Mike?
Yeah, I'll talk about the finance committee meeting we had last Wednesday. One item that's on the agenda tonight is talking about an increase to the rate of pay for substitute teachers. We talked about a new pay metric, and also a couple of policy changes that'll be required to make these changes, so that will be coming up on the agenda. We had an ELL update, just some highlights from that. Thirty-nine new students, mostly at the lowest levels of proficiency. And overall, the largest percentage is at Sacra Rapa with 128 students total, which, if I remember correctly, was about 28 to 30%. Right on. That's right. So we talked about possible staffing issues and challenges around there. School nurse update, as Peter just mentioned, the district nurse is moving on. So we talked about filling that position and some other options. All of that is on the agenda today, so we'll expand on that shortly. We had a school nutrition update. So far, the trends are looking good, and a couple items about just keeping in line, compliance with new laws and things along those lines. The Sacra Rapa playground, Dean spoke about those updates, and multi-financials are all in line with what we expected. And one item that is a recurring item we should always mention is that transportation is looking for bus drivers. So if anyone watching at home is a bus driver, or would like to be a bus driver, or could spell the word bus, please give us a call, and we'll talk to you, and we'll get you on board. The next meeting is November 5th.
Thank you.
I did wanna mention, I did see Regina today on One Westbrook, and has asked that the
rest of the school board members, but I don't think we're getting emails on the date, so hopefully, because I think it's something we do want to participate in, so I agree, Sue. I think that would be great if we could get more participation from the board as well. The first item, or is there anything else on any committee? First item for old business, 11.1, to request approve an overnight trip for the JMG leadership to attend the JMG Leadership Education Conference at Pine Tree Camp in Rome, October 15th through October 16th, 2019. Do I have a motion? Motion by Beth, second by Steve. Do I have any questions or any discussion? All those in favor? Close, opposed? Six in favor, zero opposed. Onto new business, I don't believe we have any new teacher or administrative nominations at this time. Okay. 12.2, request to approve changes to Westbrook School Department Policy, JCGA, and Mike?
Yeah, I'd like to move to take 12.2, request to approve changes to Westbrook School Department Policy, GCGA, orientation and renumeration for substitutes, action item first approval. Item 12.3, request to delete Westbrook School Department Policy, GCGA, dash R, orientation and renumeration for substitute teachers, action item first approval. And item 12.4, request to delete Westbrook School Department Policy, GCGA, dash R2, orientation and renumeration for substitute support staff, action item first approval in the aggregate.
Do I have a second? Second by Beth. Okay. Any discussion? Peter, do you wanna go over that, review those?
Sure. If I could just review that for everybody. Right now, we have a main policy, and then there are procedural policies, all in our policy book. The main policy, GCGA, speaks to our need to hire qualified substitute teachers and to make sure that they are oriented and able to do that work. The recommendation from the policy committee is to amend that policy to include the words that minimum qualifications shall be set by the superintendent of schools, and that the standard payment for substitute work shall be, and this is the addition, shall be reviewed annually by the finance committee, and the per diem rate would be set annually by the school committee. The other, the procedural policies, the R policies, have to do with the actual rate. We're a little bit unique in that our policy book actually sets the rate of substitutes. So changing policy is a pretty significant move. So anytime that we would want to consider changing the rate of pay for subs, so that we could be more competitive, so that we could be paying our subs at the qualifications that they have, at the levels that they have, we would have to go into policy and change policy, rather than simply look at the rate and look at how that rate compares across the districts. I think everybody knows, we have a severe shortage of substitutes. Not a day goes by when substitute assignments are unfilled, and it's not because we don't want to, it's because we don't physically have the substitutes. It's a, it's a small market of subs right now. Not a lot of people are looking for what's the equivalent of temporary work. So filling those spots becomes one of our prime responsibilities, and also it becomes really a very competitive market. So we want Westbrook to be more competitive in that. I can talk about the actual breakdown that I shared with finance committee, but in terms of the policy, we would want to keep GCGA as the substitute policy, but then if you removed the regulatory policies, that would just take the responsibility of setting the rate of pay out of policy, and placing it with the finance committee and eventually the school committee. And we would do that. I would recommend that we do that annually as part of our budgeting process, to set the rate of pay for the following year during that time period.
Thank you. Any questions? Sue?
Just two things. One, we need to correct the dates, this is 9/30/20, so, on the bottom.
Ah.
The other thing is, I think it would be helpful if it said, I like the idea that reviewed annually, but maybe it should say during the budget process, or like some kind of concrete, and not a specific date, but during the budget process, so it's not something that kind of falls, you know, behind. It may be helpful to have that in there, just a thought.
Yeah, you would have to do a motion, so do you wanna change it? Do you want it to come back, get drafted, and come back to us?
I don't know which is easier. Do you, and what would you? Jody?
I think you could make a motion, if you so wanted.
Do you want me to make a motion to?
Remove that language.
Yeah, that language.
Do it, propose the language.
Okay.
You vote on the language change.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we add wording that the policy, that the payments for the substitute would be reviewed annually during the budget process.
Do I have a second? Second by Mike. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. And now, do we have to go back and?
The amended policy. So the person who made the motion will have to.
Which was Mike?
All three. No, just the one that you're.
No, just the one that you're, that was approved last.
Mike?
I'd like to make a motion on 12.2, request to approve changes to Westbrook School Department Policy, GCGA, orientation and renumeration for substitutes, action item first approval.
Do I have a second? Sue? Any discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. So now, we still have to vote on 12.3 and 12.4.
Yes.
Okay. Mike, do you want to?
Sure. Taking in the aggregate, 12.3, request to delete Westbrook School Department Policy, GCGA dash R, orientation and renumeration for substitute teachers, action item first approval. And 12.4, request to delete Westbrook School Department, GCGA dash R2, orientation and renumeration for substitute support staff, action item first approval.
Second by Sue. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. I do want to say quickly, there was a student, or no, a substitute teacher that was a student recently, Derek Brunick, I'm going to throw him under the bus and say his name. So he started to substitute and he substituted, I think, in Sacagawea. He's been at the high school and middle school. And last week, he was just telling me how, geez, it'd be great if we get so mu, some more money. For some reason, he thinks this is about him tonight. So, he thinks he started this. So, yeah. But it's great to see these, these students who have graduated from here coming back and substitute. And so I think that's wonderful. Yes. So, on to 12.5, request to adjust substitute rates of pay. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mike, second by Beth. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I lost my mic.
12.5?
Take a moment. 12.6? Right?
No. Five.
12.5?
Okay. No, 4.1. Continue. Sorry.
All those in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. 12.6, request to reorganize school nursing program. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mike, second by Norine. And we'd like to, if you can explain that step.
Sure. Definitely happy to. As we know, we have, we have one opening as our district nurse, one position is open right now. We also have a second nursing position open at Sacagawea School. And that position has been open since the summertime and, and actually, it's been very hard to fill over the last year because our former nurse at Sacagawea was on a long-term leave last year. Let me just remind you what our current model is for, for nursing services. Our current model has ed tech, three level nurses, either LPNs or RNs, at each one of our five schools. And they staff the clinics at each one of those schools. And then we have a district-wide nurse who, well, we're required to have a bachelor's or better level RN to supervise the nursing program at the schools, to be, to take a lead in health plan development, in initiatives such as vaccination programs as well as the flu clinics, by the way, that are coming up in two weeks at each of our schools. So to really keep a pulse on the, the clinical work, the supervision of our clinical people at our buildings, as well as the, the general wellness and health initiatives district-wide. That model has, is really a very successful model. And I was very pleased when the school committee supported that model a couple of years ago, which allowed us to hire an ed tech at each one of our schools. Because previously, the, the high school nurse, Jen was the high school nurse and she also served as the district nurse as well. We have again, a staffing concern right now. And the staffing concern has been pretty acute at, at Sacagawea School. We've been able to fill the clinic most days with a temp agency nurse, which is very expensive. I think we've talked about that during budget season and throughout the, the year at finance committee, because we need to provide nursing services. We have students in need of care, some critical care at each one of our schools. So we, we really need a health professional at each one of our buildings. Not having candidates for that position has been really challenging. We've offered the position to one candidate. We've tried to entice other candidates. Sadly, we've learned that they've, they've shared that they feel like our rate of pay is too low for, for RNs and LPNs. In fact, there aren't very many LPNs in Maine right now. So we have a shortage of a nurse at, at Sacagawea, which is really presenting, presenting quite an issue. I'm suggesting that for the remainder of the school year, we, when we hire our district nurse, and we do have a robust pool of candidates for the district RN positions, and very well-qualified people. In fact, those interviews are happening this week, tomorrow. Jody is leading those interviews. I'm really, I'm really pleased that we had quite a bit of interest, quite immediate interest in those positions. We do have a pool of candidates for that position. So I'm suggesting that for the remainder of the school year, we assign that district nurse to the Sacagawea School, kind of going back to our previous model of, of nursing service, where she would be, she or he would be the supervisor of the other nurses, as well as the, the supervisor of a number of health plans while providing that service. Not the best model, but honestly, I'm concerned that we won't, we have not had any candidates look for, look at the Sacagawea position. So rather than continuing to hope to have our, our temp agency nurse, we were very fortunate of someone who was very regular in that position, but not always, we would be able to have that continuity of service. In order to, to really be more supportive of that district nurse and her responsibilities if she was at a building, I would be asking that, that the school committee provide a supervision stipend for, for him or her, following the same model as our department leaders, which is 1% of the, the base pay times the number of people they supervise, including themselves. That would be approximately $1,779. Also, that would place some, some additional responsibilities on our ed tech three nurses at our buildings. And I would like to suggest that if the need presents, that they would need to work up to eight hours at our middle and high school or up to seven and a half hours at our elementary schools, we would allow that. We would allow them to work those additional, additional periods of time on a case-by-case basis, if they needed to attend a meeting, if they needed to confer with parents. Right now, our elementary ed tech three nurses work seven-hour days. Our high school and middle school nurse works seven and a half hour days. I'm looking at this as kind of an emergency situation because we need to provide coverage at Sacagawea. We would look at this model, to evaluate this model for the remainder of the school year, so that when, we already started talking about budget season. When budget season is upon us, we'd be able to look at the model moving forward, if we're able to go back to that other model, or if we're able to continue with, with this model. Although it is, it is kind of, kind of distressing to, to hear from candidates that the reason they didn't want to come to join us was because our rate of pay was low for, for those positions. And that was after a significant increase during the contract negotiations and the last contract. So that, that was, that was disappointing to hear that. So that, that's what I'm hoping to do in terms of filling the position, assuming that one of our candidates for the district nurse position will be a successful candidate and that person will want to come to, to work with us. But to be very clear with her that that's the responsibility for now, but then we'd be looking at the model moving, moving forward.
Thank you, Peter. Beth?
Is there a backup plan if the, I mean, it's great to have a stipend. I really appreciate that, but, you know, it just seems like it's a lot of work, a lot of responsibility.
It is a lot of responsibility.
So does Jody supervise or who?
Jody oversees the nursing program with, she oversees the, the district nurse.
So there's the medical pieces that really need a nurse to be overseeing, but in everything else, I can support the nurses with and help them with. But we do need somebody that will oversee the, the health plans, certain 504 accommodations that need to be in place for students with needs. So yes, it is, it is a big, big job and a big undertaking, but I feel like we can manage that. We have a great nursing staff, so that's helpful to the community.
And we would still utilize the, the temp agency nurse, nurses when we have absences throughout the year. Last year, we had a couple of long-term absences and we, we were able, they were able to fill both of those most of the time for us. So we would continue that relationship on, obviously, on a case-by-case basis.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So we currently have a position open at the high school and that person, we don't have a position open at the high school.
Yeah, we have the district nurse who oversees all the nurses.
Right.
And the position at Sacagawea School.
Okay. That's what I was saying. So that makes, I mean, it makes sense, but you're right. I mean, we've been talking about that pay, you know, since we started with the ed tech. So I mean, it is a really, it's not enough money, definitely. And I think, hopefully, it's something that we can do for a year and then reevaluate what, like, maybe a better long-term plan would be to, to cover that.
I mean, I think I'm very concerned. I, I know that these positions, they're, they're maxed and, and now we're going to be short one person. I, I just think, you know, and it's a very reactive position. You never know what each day is to bring. And I think we did struggle with absentee last year. You know, we had a lot of people that were out. And I think they were, they were pushed to the limit as it was and now I'm concerned. I know we have to do something for the interim. I think we definitely need to address salaries because like Sue said, we have discussed this in negotiations before. We thought we increased them and, and yet still, we're, we're still struggling to find people. And again, I hate to have a gap out there. I just think, you know, they, you're an amazing group and what they deal with day-to-day is, sometimes can be dangerous. So, you know, hopefully, we can start addressing this right away and figure out, you know, another plan. But I'll support this tonight, just to get us going. This was motion by Mike, second by Norine. Any further discussion, any questions?
Can I just say one last thing?
Yes, absolutely.
So if your, your vote to support this is, it would be to support this plan, but also to provide that supervision stipend. So we should add the language in.
Oh, okay.
Because that, that money, that has not been allocated. So we'd have to do that and that funding would come from, from savings that we've had, that we would have because we wouldn't be hiring that sixth position. So we do have the funding for that, for the supervision stipend.
Okay. Mike and Norine, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I should have cut that.
All those in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. Next item, 12.7, request to approve a school health center. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mike, second by Beth. And, yeah, okay, so we'll have Jody and Jen come down and talk about this. This is, this is exciting. This is very exciting.
Sue said this is really exciting for us, the opportunity to have a, the potential opportunity to have a school-based health clinic to, to support our students here at Westbrook High School. I had provided some answers to some questions that you had last time in your packet, so hopefully you had time to, to read that. And Jen will highlight some of the benefits, the medical benefits of having a clinic right here in the high school and how our students access the clinic. And we also have the CEO, Ann Tucker, from Greater Portland Health, here to answer any questions that the committee may have. So I'll turn it over to Jen.
Thank you. So many of the benefits of having a school-based health center here in the school available for the students can be appreciated by offering our student population easy access. We're removing barriers to care that a lot of our families experience. Many of our families experience barriers to care like not having transportation, parents that have to work during the day and have difficulty taking time off from work. So losing income, losing time from work that they really can't afford to lose. So having the ease of access to care right during the school day, students miss less school when they can access their care right here where they're attending classes. They can have a healthcare visit during a study hall or in between classes. A lot of times, it's very, a brief visit, a check-in with a healthcare provider, a mental health care provider. It improves a student's follow-up with a healthcare provider that sometimes gets missed because of those challenges the parents have getting someone to a visit. So now, a student that maybe needs to follow up for, say, asthma or a concussion or another health-related issue that a parent maybe would have a challenge getting them to a visit, the student can simply walk down the hallway right in their high school and attend that healthcare visit. This doesn't necessarily replace their primary care physician, or if they do not have a primary care physician, a student can now attend regular healthcare visits. Students that maybe are not participating in extracurricular activities because they are not able to get to a physical exam, which is a requirement at the high, middle school and high school levels, they can now easily access that needed care, have that physical exam that they need to have on record, and they can attend and participate in those extracurricular activities, which is such a protective factor for so many children. So having those preventive visits, it increases immunization compliance, which is a tremendous challenge in the school department. So being able to simply, again, walk right down the hallway, pop into that nice school-based health center, it's a quick visit, get the needed immunizations that you are maybe missing a dose of, and then you're on your way to your next class and you're in compliance with the state laws. It's, it's a great benefit for our students. The health centers that are in the Portland schools, many of them have dental facilities available and that's a potential in the future as well. Many of our students at this time are being referred over to the facilities at Portland High School for dental because we just don't have that available in our community. And there's very few dentists that will take main care or have sliding fee scales available for them. So many of our children are already being referred to a school-based health center. It's just not in our community. Is there questions that I can answer about? Yes.
Sue?
I have lots of questions. I think it's great. I think that's a great idea. I'm surprised that it hasn't come up before now. So who pays for it?
It's grant-funded. Federal grants are funding him.
Okay.
The models are different in every school-based health center. It's not a uniform thing.
So that would be the big thing. We're going to have to find out like how.
I was going to say, Ann's the authority.
She's the expert.
I'm the CFO, so I have a little knowledge there.
Nice.
I'm the CEO. Greater Portland Health is a federally qualified health center. And a federally qualified health center receives some federal funding under what's called a 330 program. And we happen to have two 330 grants. One's a 330E, which means you serve everyone, and one is a 330H, which is for the homeless population. And so the way that it gets paid for is, the mission is about providing high-quality healthcare to everyone regardless of their ability to pay. However, with parents, not with students, we have to show documentation to the federal government based on a sliding fee scale, based on poverty guidelines, if somebody is not paying to use the services. We also, because we are a health center, take program revenue. So people who have main care, we take main care, or commercial insurance. So to access the health center, the students bring home an enrollment form, so the parents have to have signed, signed, signed them up to see the health center, except for in some cases where they can receive care without that. But in that, it will ask for insurance information and if somebody doesn't have insurance, again, that's not a barrier to care. So there's multiple funding streams. For the school-based health centers in Portland, we also receive a state grant. And there had been legislation for expansion of funding this past year, but there was lots of legislation. for lots of funding. And so, that piece didn't pass, but that's also, part of the model is through state funding. We also apply for private foundation funding as well to help put the whole model together.
My second question was about parental approval, like consent. So, that would be how that would be covered because they, you would have to get the consent to do the immunizations or things like that?
Yes, we have a, and I'm happy to send it over, but we have an enrollment form that goes home in a packet, also has frequently asked questions, shares that information.
And is birth control one of the things that would be provided potentially?
Yes, it is.
Just figured we'd get that out there right off the bat.
I should have started that with my leading sentence. But yes, and actually, we would be following the state, the same guidelines that we use for the state funding that we get for school-based health centers in Portland, in talking with the clinical director who could be here tonight, who will be overseeing it. There's a, you know, a list of services that the state actually requires that we provide in school-based health centers that they give funding to, and birth control is one of them. And that is also one of the areas in terms of parental consent that I think that they can access as well.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Noreen?
So, you're saying the parents don't have to be with the child when they go in as long as they sign off on that consent?
Correct. So, once you sign off the consent, they can go from being, you know, between classes. They can stop in if they want to see a behavioral health counselor. They can go get their immunizations. If, the, the success of a, a community health center inside the school is really about the relationships with the nursing staff, the administrators, the social workers. It's really a team effort to support the students. And so, they may go to the school nurse and the school nurse, if they have an enrollment form and they have, think they have strep throat, or they can then head over and go to the school-based health center. If somebody has a medical home somewhere else, because most children already have a pediatrician, we fax over all of that information so that it is also included in their file, especially around compliance with immunizations. It's, and Peter mentioned flu clinics, where Portland nursing staff is thrilled that we are doing the flu clinics in the, in the high schools to help support and ease the workload.
Will you send notification home to parents if a child went? Will you send them like an email or something, say, hey, your child came into the office for a visit?
I think there's phone calls that get, this is where the clinical director would probably be more helpful than the CEO. They do make phone calls. There is such thing as confidential visits as well that don't go home if somebody's coming in for testing for STDs or something, same as if they went to their own primary care provider.
Even if they are a minor, the parents do not?
It's a state law. Even at their regular primary provider, we're no, we're no different than, than a regular healthcare center. They can go do that now.
Where is this gonna be located?
So, a location that is down toward the gym, next to the nursing clinic. So, we've identified that with Wendy Harvey, the space, and that space is available. And one of the questions that the committee had last time was the access to the clinic. And at this time, it will just be for access of our students only. Looking into the future, perhaps opening it up to the community, but the safety of our students is the, our number-one priority. And so, looking at a location in the high school that is kind of separate from all the classrooms, so kids can access the clinic in a more private location as they do the nurse clinic. So, that was one consideration and looking. And just the space that was, that is available at the high school and, and that's available down there. So, the doors will continue to, to stay locked and our students will access the clinic in the ways that we're just talked about. And there'll be no concern about people coming in and out of the building near that area. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Are we also gonna charge any fee to use the space and for electricity?
So, no. Our, so what we, everything will be provided, the staff, the equipment, everything, the supplies, and we need to just have a space available for the clinic to, to be and to live. And so, that is, that's our obligation in this, and then everything else will be covered.
Good. Anyone else? I want to thank you all for coming out on this. This is a great idea. I'm glad to see this is starting up. And Jen, I know you've been thinking about this and talking about, working on this for a long time. I'm bummed that you won't be able to, to see it start off, but, you know, thank you for all your work on this. And Jody, thank you. I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this. And thank you for all the information. That was great when you put in our package. That was very helpful. Thank you.
It'll be a great opportunity for our students.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a motion, four with, oh, Sue, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Motion by Mike, second by Beth. Was that correct?
Yeah.
All those in favor? None opposed? Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Twelve point eight, request to approve changes to Westbrook School Department policy. I H B E A. Do I have a motion? Motion by Sue, second by Mike. Peter, do you wanna help us out on this one?
Sure. Just very briefly, the LAO plan is a required policy that basically describes how we provide services for students with limited English proficiency. And we need to revise this periodically, and it was brought to the policy committee recently for that periodic review.
Thank you. Any questions? Sue?
No, not really a question, just a comment. I think this is really wonderful. I love it that it's all spelled out. I think it would be great if maybe Regina could come sometime and give us an update just on the program and just how things are going and, and just all of it, how it's being implemented. I think that would be really awesome.
Yes.
That'd be great. Thank you. Motion by Sue, second by Mike. Do I have all those in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. Last item, twelve point nine. Oh, no, actually, we added.
Is he extra?
Twelve point nine, request to appoint a school committee member as a legislative delegate for the school committee. Do I have a motion? Motion by Noreen, second by Mike.
I think he's just, he's.
We need to nominate the president.
Do I want to what?
Did you? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Veronica Beeks.
Do I have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. Last item, one that we added, twelve point ten, request to approve an overnight trip for college tours in northern Maine for WRVC students from November 5th, 2019 through November 6th, 2019. Do I have a motion? Motion by Beth, second by Mike. Any discussion? Noreen?
Is it all students or like certain classes? I'm trying to read this.
Primarily the electricians and the CDL students.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Nope.
And it's funded through MLLMA. It's not school funding.
No, it's fine. All those in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. Last item, important dates, and I'm only reading until the next school board meeting or else we'll be here all night. October 11th, professional development, no school. October 14th, Indigenous Peoples' Day, no school. October 16th, Educational Programs Committee meeting. October 21st, five o'clock Policy Committee meeting. Educational Programs, excuse me, I'm gonna back up, is five o'clock as well. November 6th, six o'clock, Finance Committee meeting. November 7th, Parent-Teacher Conference, half-day of school for students. November 11th, Veterans Day, no school. November 13th will be our next school board meeting at seven o'clock. Is there any public participation? Jody?
Sorry, that policy preview is on the 28th.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And that's been changed on the website.
Okay. Thank you, Jody. No. Public participation. Anyone like to speak? No, Sue. Not here.
This is really good. I went to the safety forum last night and it was very well done. Thank you very much. I know there weren't a lot of people, but it was, but thank you very much. It was a lot of good stuff. And I'm sorry that I was bothering Wendy Harvey with questions, Dr. Lewis. Yeah, that was really my.
It's good for her.
It's good for her.
Skip the win. Anyway. Anyone else? I do want to thank the services of Sandy Mehlman and Jen Druin. Very sad to see you go. You know, just, it's, those are big shoes, very hard position. You've done a great job and I wish you well in the next, next competition. Thank you.
Yes, we are.
Anyone else?
Just, just briefly, two quick things. Just a reminder to anybody who, who is listening, who has children in our schools, believe it or not, it's almost snow season and I anticipate having to call some homes at five in the morning occasionally. I apologize, Noreen, but we might have to.
Yeah.
Please, 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 keep your phone numbers up to date, the phone number especially, that you want us to call you at that time of the morning. You can do that by calling your school office and asking them to update your, your contact information. And second thing, our parent-teacher conferences are coming up. Please make sure that you sign up for your time. Different schools have parents sign up in different ways, but we really look forward to meeting with our families to talk about student progress over the first quarter of the school year. And we have a functional safety drill coming up on October 24th at Westbrook Middle School. This is our third annual drill that actually tests our safety plan, and it's called a reunification drill because that will be the focus of this plan. We'll actually be simulating if this was an actual emergency and what it would be like to move students out of the building. And we'll be pretending to have some parents reunify with their students as we test out this plan. Lots of folks from public safety in the city and around Cumberland County will be attending that to give us feedback on the plan and also to help others learn how this plan works as well.
If you're a parent, would you like to volunteer?
And Jody is saying if you are a parent who would like to volunteer to be one of those parents pretending to pick up your child or another one, which is pretending, just contact Jody. And we do need some parent volunteers if you're able to, to spend basically the morning with us on the 24th, starting at around 8:00 AM.
We also do a shout-out for Challenge Day. We still do.
And one more shout-out for volunteers. So, Wendy Harvey and Mike Russell mentioned Challenge Day in their presentation about BAR. Challenge Day is similar to BAR, really focused on social and emotional learning and development, and it's a day that we have organized with a national organization coming to Westbrook High School to conduct some workshops during the day around, around the whole child, around social and emotional growth. We do need volunteers for that day. Some people may have already been volunteered or voluntold, which is awesome, but if you do have the time on the twenty, oh, excuse me, on December 2nd and 3rd, 2nd or 3rd, but preferably 2nd and 3rd, please contact either Mr. Russell here at Westbrook High School or any one of the administrators, Ms. Harvey or Mr. Colgan or Mr. Garrett, to let them know you'd be available. So, lots of volunteer opportunities coming up in our schools.
Now, it's a challenge day, the day without the phone. No, I just wanted to.
Don't try to back off.
That is a challenge. See, and I have a mark now on my face that will never go away. Yeah, okay. Yeah, and you might, I don't know if you want to send out like a, just a reminder to us in the next month.
I'm good. I'm right here.
You know, that would be great, so.
And we already have one going, I remember. At least one.
Okay.
What about the no phone thing? I didn't know about that.
Do we get in trouble if we get caught with the phone a little bit?
Yeah.
No.
Just, just to be clear.
Yeah, just to be clear. Okay, great. Well, we're going to request to adjourn into executive session to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to one MRSA. Do I have a motion? Motion by Noreen, second by Steve. All those in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. We now adjourn. Thank you, guys. Bye, ladies and gentlemen.